All right, we're gonna go ahead and start the meeting here. If we go through the pledge of allegiance.
(inaudible) Oh, okay. You might have to come up.
All right. Pledge of allegiance.
To the flag and the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
There's a beige Lee song with its headlocks on. I just wanted to announce it as a last-leave, if anybody wants it.
Oh, that's mine. I'll take care of that.
Go ahead. Yep. You got it.
Thank you, Todd. Yeah.
All right, we're gonna open the public hearing for Tamarack. It's the first part of business tonight. And, uh, is Richard? Nope? He's not here at this point?
No.
Okay. Essentially, what we've got with the Tamarack proposal, it's a total of five cabins being proposed on, uh, basically, it's eight hundred acres of property that they currently have in that project. And, um, the five cabins are gonna be four overnight cabins and, um, for to accommodate guests overnight. And the fifth would be a, uh, a health facility of sorts that would, um, be there available for those guests to use. And, uh, essentially, what the project involves, um, I think at this point, everything's pretty much in order as far as the submission goes. Um, Julie, you're pretty much, uh, I know you're just walking in, but you're pretty much set for what I saw with your letters.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
A couple of comments, and then, um, and then the conditions that are in the, um, anything.
Right. All right, and I'll go over those conditions towards the end of this, uh, the public hearing. Um, I guess we'll start off, does anybody have any public comments they'd like to make relating to the, uh, the proposed project?
I'm just wondering whether the--
If you, yes, move to the podium and state, state your name and your address, please.
I'm Donna Rosendale. I'm the next door neighbor to Tamarack. They love me. Um, I just wondering if there was any requirement for notice of this hearing, 'cause I did not get any.
Do they have some property on it? There should be, yes.
I did not receive any notice. I'm also the neighbor to Silo Ridge, and I did not receive any notice on that. I only know this about this hearing, but somebody called me this afternoon to tell me.
Okay, no, you should've been notified.
In the past, I've always been notified by certified mail. I have not been notified.
I hear what you're saying. I'll, I'll check into that, but, um, and you should've been, yeah.
And who are on for the public hearing for Silo, but that hasn't been published yet?
Okay, but I have not been notified of this.
Do you have any comments about the application?
Yes, um... This is the original, uh, I only have one copy. I'd be glad to give it to somebody to make copies. Application for Tamarack in 1990. It says, uh, "No new structures of any kind will ever be constructed." That doesn't seem to be consistent with this.
Was that, was that an application that they filed, or was that--
That is their application of the, to the planning board in 1990. It's in the handwriting of Tim Bonacchio. If someone would like copies of it?
Yeah, sure.
That's what I asked.
And I think I've seen it before, and I think I was looked into, and my understanding was that that was part of the initial application process, but it was not part of the approval.
I don't, I'm just telling you what I have.
Yeah, I understand what you're saying, yeah. I remember seeing it. I went through the packet, looked at all paperwork. I do remember reading that, and I asked about it.
Yeah, you were the, I need work here now.
At that time, I was, yes. Yeah.
Do you want copies of this, so you have a copy?
If the neighbors like to have it, if nobody's interested, I don't care, give it, give it back.
Okay, um...
All right, basically, what? There are copies in the file, aren't there?
I'm sure there is, but I'm not, you know.
Yeah.
I'm sure the 1990 file, it'd be just easier to copy right at this point. I don't really wanna go now.
Mm-hmm. Sure.
Was there a public hearing sign posted at the entrance? There must've been, I think I saw it, right, to Tamarack there?
I'm assuming there was.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure I saw that.
I don't go around checking out all the signs for all the public hearings and so forth, but, uh, I mean, you're the, you're the--
That's procedure, sure.
Yeah, yeah.
So, the question would be, I was, I--
You need to come to the podium.
It says, "No residents within 4,000 feet of what?"
I had that by, by accident. I don't see any of my other neighbors here. How do we know they were notified? Thank you.
What was that name, about 4,000 feet?
His point was that it says, "No residents," no new residents. I mean, this says, "No residents within 4,000 feet," and that's it. And it doesn't say, "Within 4,000 feet of what?" Um, and it doesn't say, "No new residents," so, I mean, I, I understand his point, but if you look, you look at the application materials, it's, it's not very, not very helpful.
That's on, that's on a piece of paper by itself.
Yeah, that, I don't recall that part there at all. Never seen that. All right, well, we'll look into it along with the, um, the issue you're relating to about the notifications, and we'll, we'll go from there.
Can I see that too?
Oh, yeah. How is that mailing list handled, then, for the notifications? Is that--
It's 500 feet with surrounding properties.
Yeah.
And everybody's notified, notified by certified mail.
So, you look at a map and--
And, and we pull the list off the G.I.S.
Oh, okay. And it's certified mails. I just thought it might've--
Oh, no, it's, it's certified mail.
So, that's easy enough to backtrack on.
Six dollars and forty-eight cents each one.
That's right. Okay.
It won't be hard to find out what happened.
Okay.
Any other public comments relating to Tamarack?
If you want a presentation, I don't know--
If you could, I'd appreciate it, yeah. Thank you. We started without you.
Yeah, I do. No, that's, I'm sorry. Bye-bye.
Actually, if you wouldn't mind making the presentation a little bit more detailed than you would ordinarily make for the gentleman's benefit in the background of things you didn't get noticed, so this way, if he has any comment on the stuff--
Certainly.
--that you're discussing, he can raise it now at his time.
Okay. Um, the Tamarack cabins project, my name is Rich Runney, the engineer for the project, for the record. Um, the Tamarack cabins project consists of, uh, five cabins that are proposed for the existing site. The existing site is an eight-hundred acre parcel. Um, it's primarily used as a shooting preserve, so the cabins would be an accessory use to that use, or to the, um, existing use. The, uh, out of the five cabins, four of the cabins are proposed to be sleeping cabins for overnight guests, uh, and the overnight guests will be for members only. Um, it's not gonna be open to the public. Um, and then the fifth cabin will be a fitness cabin, which will be open to the members only as well. Um, we are proposing a driveway. There's an existing road, but it's too steep to follow that path, so we're proposing a new driveway, um, and that'll be about twelve-hundred-and-fifty feet. The, um, total, this area of disturbance is 3.74 acres, and, uh, since we're over an acre disturbance, we've prepared a full stormwater pollution prevention plan, which I know your town engineer has reviewed. And, um, then the septic, there'll be a septic for the five cabins, and we're proposing seven-hundred-and-sixty-eight gallons per day is the size of that, uh, that'll have capacity for. And that's currently before the Dutchess County Department of Health for review. There will be a, uh, well, a proposed well that will be drilled to supply the water. And, um, we've also met with the fire department. I re-met with the fire department again this past Monday, and they have indicated verbally that they're, have approved everything. They asked for two changes to our site plan as shown right now. The dry pipe that we've provided and have shown, they would like us to extend that across Turkey Hollow Road, so then they don't have to lay any hoses across Turkey Hollow Road. Um, so that adds about another thirty feet of dry pipe, which we will add that, that's not an issue. They've also asked for the gravel surface of the driveway. We had it specked out as being twelve feet wide. They've asked for it to be fourteen feet wide, so we're gonna go ahead and do that as well, too. We don't have any issues with that. Um, and then, other than that, they were satisfied with the plan, and they will be preparing a letter for the planning board. Uh, that's the detail. I can answer any questions.
So, you hold up, would you mind holding up maybe a site plan, just kinda going over the details with the public, so they can see it?
Sure. This is Turkey Hollow Road. Out here, um, I think it's about eighteen-hundred feet is Route 44. So, we're back into the site about eighteen-hundred feet from Route 44. Uh, there's an existing access road that goes up the hill here, uh, and there's an existing flat plateau area that they used to use for, uh, shooting grounds there. And we're proposing to take the driveway through a more gentle area and wrap it around, bring it all the way up. And then there'll be five cabins, and they're, they're laid out in a semicircle with the fitness cabin in the middle. Um, the septic location is here, the well location is here, and, um, I think that's pretty much it. The dry pipe I talked about with the fire department is shown here, so we're gonna extend it across Turkey Hollow Road. What that will allow the fire department to do is, further in this direction is the Wasse Creek, they can go to that, pump out of that, and then they would pump right to this pipe. This would allow them not to have to lay as much hose and make it quicker than on. And, um, we're doing this with as minimal amount of disturbance as possible, and we have two stormwater treatment areas at the bottom of the hill here and here, and these stormwater treatment areas are infillation. So, we're taking the runoff from the site and infiltrating it back into the ground.
Great, thanks.
Sergeant Aback, do you have any comments on that presentation?
Mr. Rosendale? You have any, uh, comments on that, or?
No, I have no comments on that.
Now, do you have objections to the project, or, or not?
I have no, not enough information to know. I only know that, and I'm a lawyer, that I don't believe that this board has authority or standing in the state of the night, because the neighbors have not been notified at this party at all.
Okay.
And if they are, I would love to see some sort of continuing to this.
You may.
Okay. Anybody else have comments, questions?
I'd like just to address that last issue.
Relating to your project?
Excuse me?
As it relates to your project, I mean, or, I mean--
Yes, well--
I don't wanna get a debate going.
I'm in those provisions, because I have actual knowledge that, for instance, um, Turkey Hollow Inc., which is the owner of the property there, received a certified mail.
Speak on what it's--
Yeah, you're good, yeah.
--the same video tape.
Give us your name and address.
My name is John Regan. I'm the vice president of Tamarack Preserve, and I just want to address Mr. Rosendale's assertion that nobody received certified mail notice of this meeting. I personally signed a receipt for Turkey Hollow Inc., which is the owner of the property there, and it was given in a timely fashion and by proper mail.
All right.
And I think it'd be very easy to refute that claim.
Well, again, certified, so we can find out.
Yeah. I just didn't want the board to be misled.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
I understand it. I just wanted to do a question.
I understand it. Okay.
Okay.
All right, any other public comment? Anybody else? At this point, let's see, we've got, uh, some resolutions, too.
Yeah. Um, so, I provided the board with, um, two resolutions for you to consider. The first resolution, um, is a resolution adopting a negative declaration under the State Environmental Quality Review Act, indicating that you've reviewed the EAF Parts One and Two for the project, um, and that there are no significant adverse environmental effects, and you think a negative is warranted, so, um, that's the first resolution, and there's the resolve clause here.
Nobody has it, or you haven't?
The second resolution is a resolution to approve the amended special use permit, uh, subject to a number of conditions, which you guys should read and then discuss, um, and then decide whether you agree with those conditions, or you wanna delete them or add some, but, um, you can have that discussion after you get through the SECA resolution.
Right.
Okay, this is the resolution adopting negative declaration under the SECA, State Environmental Quality Review Act, SECA. Now, therefore, be it resolved as follows. The planning board issues a SECA negative declaration for the project, and the planning board adopts and incorporates herein by reference the attached written negative declaration for the project, and, planning board directs that the attached negative declaration be filed, distributed, and published as required by the SECA Regulations 6-NY-CRR-617-DAC.12. Chairman Fontaine?
Yes.
Peter Clair?
Yes.
Nathan Roy?
Yes.
Anthony Robastelli?
Yes.
Eric McEnroe?
Yes.
Bill Kroger?
Yes.
Okay, I'm gonna pass this. Anthony, please, sign it.
Before we do the roll call, I'm gonna run out, read the resolution, and then we cover the condition again.
You--
I'll do it, I'll do it right now.
Okay.
Yeah, I thought you had two, um, different SECA resolutions, huh? Just the one?
No, just the one. I mean, the negative declaration is, is attached to it. That's when you, what you read.
Okay. All right. All right, now, for the, um, the approval, there's actually, uh, three conditions that, um, currently outstanding that we're, we need to let everybody know about, and see if everybody's in agreement on this. Um, essentially, they're gonna have to provide a copy of the sanitary system design drawings and health department approval once received before the sign-off occurs. They would need to provide a copy of New York State D.C. Wetlands Distributes Permit before we sign off. They would need to provide structural calculations, details for retaining walls taller than four feet, which, um, John Fenton would require anyways. They need details on the construction of those before we sign off. Anybody have any questions related to that?
There's actually, there's actually, there's actually some more there. That's the actual resolution.
Okay. First one being, the applicant shall address the comments from the planning board engineer on a review memo dated August 19th, which are the ones I just discussed. Um, the applicant shall provide a copy of the final sanitary system. Okay, we just discussed that one. Yep, New York State D.C. Permit, that's the one we did before also. Um, prior to the issuance of a CO for any cabin, the applicant shall provide a copy of the recorded deed covenant for the permanent stormwater measures on the site as required by New York State D.C.'s Speedy's General Permit for Stormwater Discharges from Construction Activities, GP dash zero dash one zero dash zero zero one. The fifth, the applicant shall provide structural calculations and details for any retaining walls to be constructed more than four feet high. We talked about that before. Um, number six, the applicant shall provide final approval of the project plans by the Town of Remenia Fire Department, and submit any revised plans requested by the fire department. Number seven, the applicant shall comply with the requirements of the Americans with Disabilities Act unless it could prove to the code enforcement officer that it's exempt from these requirements as a truly private club under federal law and state law, the applicant shall submit any revised plans complying with the ADA. Number eight, prior to the issuance of a CO for any cabin, the applicant shall provide as-built plans for all new improvements on the site as required by Section 121 dash 68 of the zoning code. Number nine, the applicant shall pay, pay all outstanding invoices to the planning board's consultants. Those are the nine conditions that need to be fulfilled before we can sign off. Um, quick question, the ADA, the part related to the ADA--
John Fenton had looked into it, and he sent me back another code section, and it appears that we may have to provide one unit as ADA, so we'll have to add a ramp to it.
All right, so you have to--
But I think that's condition that we can add that to the drawing. It sounded like--
Yes, yes.
What was the other one about the as-built?
Number eight.
Was it the as-built of the driveway?
Okay, yeah, prior to the issuance of a CO for any cabin--
Oh, CO, okay.
Yeah. Advocate shall provide an as-built, provide as-built plans for all new improvements on the site as required by Section 128, 21 dash 68 of the zoning code.
So, the zoning code requires you to do that?
Yeah, no, I just wanted to make sure that that was something that, that's actually, we would provide that after the, the planning board would sign off, but then we're providing that before the CO.
Yeah, but it's, it's conditioned under, you know, so you're okay with that with the--
Yeah, yeah, no, I just wanted to make sure the, the order of it.
Now, the ADA issue is, um, purely private clubs are exempt from the ADA under federal and state law.
Right.
Um, but you have to be able to prove that you're truly--
But John found, John found something in the New York State Building Code that he, uh, sent back to me, and we're gonna do further research on it, but what he found was not in the ADA regulations, but it was in the New York State Building Code, so--
Okay, if you guys are okay providing it, that's the, on this line.
If it turns out that we have to provide it, then we provide the, the additional, we'll, we'll have to provide at least one ramp on one of the--
Okay.
It sounded like, as I said before, you were doing that anyways at this point.
Uh, well, we don't have any ramps shown on the site plan, so the only thing that would change in the site plan is adding a ramp, you know, specifically calling out where it is.
Okay.
All the resolve clauses, yeah.
Are any other, uh, questions related from anybody to hold in?
Okay.
Yeah?
The rest of the resolution, be it further resolved that the planning board hereby approves the applicant's site plans prepared by Remenia Engineering, including but not limited to the following: overall parcel and land use map last revised April 7th of 2014; site grading and utilities plan last revised July 28th, 2014; access driveway profile last revised June 13th, 2014; erosion and sediment control plan last revised July 28th, 2014; erosion, erosion and sediment control and stormwater details last revised July 28th, 2014; and SWIP last revised August 4th, 2014. And be it further resolved that pursuant to Section 121 dash 63B of the zoning code, the planning board issues the attached findings in support of amended special use permit and site plan approval.
Yeah, let's go back here. We gotta read that one.
Oh, okay. Now, therefore, be it resolved in accordance with one, Section 121 dash 64 of the zoning code, that the planning board hereby grants the amended special use permit requested by the applicant, subject to the following conditions which must be satisfied unless otherwise stated prior to the stamping and signing of the site plans by the planning board chairman. Those were the ones--
Sure.
No, I'm ready. Okay. Right, let's see, I did that one. Okay, so-- Be it further resolved that the planning board hereby authorizes the planning board chair to stamp and sign the site plans upon the applicant's satisfaction of all applicable conditions, and be it further resolved that in accordance with Section 121 dash 62H of the zoning code, this amended special use permit shall expire if, one, the amended special use permits use ceases for more than twenty-four consecutive months for any reason; two, the applicant fails to obtain the necessary building permits, or fails to comply with the conditions of the amended special use permit, if any, within twelve months of its issuance; or, three, its time limit, if any, expires without renewal. And be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution shall be filed in the office of the Town of Remenia, town clerk, within five days of the date of this resolution, and shall be mailed to the applicant within the same five-day period. Okay. Roll. Chairman Fontaine?
Yes.
Peter Clair?
Yes.
Nathan Roy?
Yes.
Anthony Robastelli?
Yes.
Eric McEnroe?
Yes.
Bill Kroger?
Yes.
Okay, I guess we're having a closed hearing at this point. Okay.
I'll make the motion to close public hearing.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yeah. Hey, next on the list is, um, an agenda for Silo, and we've got a bunch of different areas to, um, cover related to Silo Ridge, so we'll get started on that area. What the board needs to do tonight is make, is make determination as to whether Silo is ready to proceed with, um, public hearing that we've got scheduled for September 4th, I think it was. I believe that's the date, and, uh, there's several areas that we had asked them to, uh, make sure were completed by this evening in order to be able to proceed in that manner. And essentially, we're gonna try to go through them one by one and see how we sit, and if there are areas that, uh, haven't been finalized yet, the board will have to make a determination as to whether we wanna put a halt to the process when we schedule it, or, um, go forward at this point, so. Uh, I guess, George, you're all set to go. You wanna take your end of it first? I mean, essentially, I mean, just like, let me give a, a recap here. We've had back and forth between Silo and George James, our consultant, related to the, uh, visual simulations that were submitted, um, some lack of agreement in some areas, and, uh, George is here to give us a overview as to what his concerns are. Uh, Amanda, and you want to say something before George starts, or?
No, I'm just gonna address your list, if you needed me to.
Okay. George?
Sure. Okay. As you know, uh, late in my book, we got a new book with, uh, new visual simulation. Um, and today, we're gonna talk about what I see as remaining technical issues, and then, um, Norm asked me to, to start substantive issues, meaning normally you don't go through the substantive phase until all the technical issues have been resolved, but Norm said, "Well, let's, let's move on," you know, in the issue of, of time, and I thought it was a reasonable thing to start doing, because they're close. Okay, so the technical issues, if you recall, I went over in July, and not everybody was here--
Should we have a mic for July 2nd? Yeah, probably, um-- Maybe we should have a mic for you.
Yeah, here he comes. Stay right there, George.
Okay.
Reinforcements coming.
Public's not hearing you.
Okay.
There you go.
I came before your board on July 3rd, and I went through many of the, the issues that we had been discussing, technical issues, uh, regarding the analysis they did in May. And this book addresses nearly all of them, and I, uh, the resolution is great, the treatment of vegetation is good, um, the buildings are generally in the right spot and, and the right height. Um, it is, it, it is a substantial improvement over what was provided previously. There are still a few issues which I'll go over with you. The first is the base image, and, which is the, which is the serious issue. If you recall, one of my comments was, gosh, the, the, all of the photographs appear to be washed out without much color in them, and I asked a question, "Well, how were they processed after they were taken?" And this is a, from the FEIS, just showing some color. This is from the May analysis, um, where the color was washed out, and that was my initial comment. And then, in the July analysis, it was washed out even more. We'll do that again. All right, so you have, that was the May analysis. All of the images were washed out even more. Um, and the reason behind this is technical, and I'm gonna have to get into it a little bit, because I think it's, it's important. The photographs were taken in RAW image format, which is a format that you and, that most people can't even see. It is something that a photographer uses to get darkroom-like effects. They want to, um, adjust color. It captures more information than any other image format, so if you're a professional photographer and you wanna do some really fancy adjustments to it, it's, it's the proper format to use. So, in my response on color, and from my understanding of what happened, and from the evidence that I've been given, is, you know, questioning, "Well, what did you do on the color?" The, the consultant, that, uh, the applicant's consultant, essentially didn't do any adjustments to the RAW image format, essentially leaving the RAW image format unadjusted, which you can't do, because that's not how the work, that, that does not capture colors or shades or anything as the, um, as the eye would see them. Uh, it captures a lot of information, but it's up to the photographer to make all of the settings, um, to, to have an image that represents what the human eye would see. Now, we know from the RAW image format that they provided us, that when the picture was snapped, there is the RAW image that was taken, and there is a standard format JPEG that would be similar to, that would come out of any of our digital cameras. And that is how you typically do this, so you actually know what the human eye would see, and you can do your-- the RAW image format, essentially leaving the RAW image format unadjusted, which you can't do, because that's not how the work, that does not capture colors or shades or anything as the eye would see them. It captures a lot of information, but it's up to the photographer to make all of the settings, to have an image that represents what the human eye would see. Now, we know from the RAW image format that they provided us, that when the picture was snapped, there is the RAW image that was taken and there is a standard format JPEG that would be similar to, that would come out of any of our digital cameras. And that is how you typically do this, so you actually know what the human eye would see, and you can do your adjustments. And, you know, if the sky is overexposed or something like that, you want to fix it. You can, the RAW image format will allow you to do that. I've asked Pedro, and I said, well, listen, can you just provide the JPEG that was taken with one of the images, so we could see how close it is to what the, how close the RAW image file is to the JPEG? And as of yesterday, and that may have changed, Pedro was not able to get that JPEG that was taken with the images, the RAW image format. And this, I'm just gonna show you why this is important. This is a photograph, clearly not here, but just with different levels of saturation, color saturation in it, from no saturation to oversaturation. But with a RAW image file, saturation is only one of the things that you end up adjusting. You, exposure, contrast, highlights, shadows, clarity of the color, clarity of the image, the vibrance, temperature, all of these little slider bars over here on the side are things that you adjust to create your final image. So, so what? I guess is a reasonable question to ask, so what? The so what of it is, when you don't have a lot of color contrast, or the color contrast that's expected in the image, and it's more of a black and white or two-tone type of image, you end up with things blending more into it, because there must be less contrast, because there are fewer colors for which, for it to contrast. So this is viewpoint seven, as it was published, with very little color in it. And you can see, this is a simulation right here, you can see it. The buildings are there, they're in the right spot, the treatment of the vegetation is fair, but they blend more into the background than, they appear to blend more into the background than they probably should. You, Pedro provided another photograph, this one, where after the fact, they added some color to it, essentially made some adjustments. But if you do this, and you're adjusting both the existing conditions photograph and the simulation, the blending will essentially persist, because you're adjusting everything the same.
Can you go back between the two you just did? Okay. For one of the two again?
Okay, so here, this is the simulation as it appears. This is, this is the one with the color adjustment that Pedro did.
Okay. I don't see it.
And this is another one, it's color adjustment that I did, which is not ideal, essentially leaving the simulated part the same, but adjusting the color to the background image, which is essentially cutting through it. It's not ideal, it's Photoshop work. But that...
I'm sorry. Go back between the two, the one that was initially submitted, I guess, and the one that Pedro resubmitted?
So this is initially submitted.
Okay.
All right, and Pedro was saying we could adjust the color, you could really see it over here with the greens over here, as they suddenly appear. So that was initially submitted. This is one where it was adjusted through some image processing. And this is another way of adjusting it. But ideally... In my opinion, and this is my opinion, all right, I think this is a serious issue, because number one, it's systematic, it affects every single shot. And it's a systematic thing that will likely understate the project's visibility. And that right there is something to be concerned about. The after-the-fact color adjustments, they change the color of both the photograph and the simulation, and so the blending, that the blending effect will persist. The proper fix, what I would do, and what I've suggested that Pedro do, is you adjust the settings of the photograph to approximate the JPEG that was taken with the photographs, with the RAW images. You do this for both the existing conditions photograph and the layer that does all of vegetative treatment. That layer that does the vegetative treatment takes forever to do, right? You don't have to do it again. You can apply the same adjustments to it, and then you just recomposite the images. It's not, you know, a snap of the button, but it's like a couple days' work, at least my estimate, if they were done as my office would do them. All this said, the materiality of this is really up to you. I, you know, my recommendation to you is that, is that it should be fixed, because it's a systematic problem, and we know it's not right. But the so what question is really, you know, that's why you're here.
Is that the only point, viewpoint that you disagree with?
Well, it would be all of them...
Of course, that's from King Stud looking out, right?
The...
And that's without no trees, right? It's pretty, it's like a forest?
Yes.
It's really like a...
Right, this is the one that was altered by my office.
Yeah, after the...
So this is, this is the one that came out of the...
Yeah, without the trees really being in bloom, right?
Right, that's the one that's in the simulation now.
And then the first time around when we did that, remember, which is good that you're from the beginning with us, the Beginning Project, what was the difference from Beginning Project, first time around, that we talked earlier with, in that view? When we, when they first came out with the, I mean, the houses are in the same area, pretty much. What was the difference?
The original plan.
Yes, in this area, that's pretty much appropriate. It's close to the same footprint.
Was it the same application or no?
But look, but to be clear...
Yep.
This problem is with every single photograph, meaning...
No, I'm talking about the first, the first time, the first permission that they, when they did this, because, you know, we went through this.
Yes, right.
Me and you went through this.
Right.
But I mean, what was, what's the difference of your opinion with the first time around in this?
The visual impact from the first set of plans.
Right, I will be getting to that in a little bit. That's a substantive comment, and I've prepared a lot of materials on that. And so if I could hold that, would I actually speak to it?
I just...
Because this is a technical issue, right? I'm not saying that this is, you know, this is, this is just a representation of the visuals, right?
Right.
And I know at this point, at least according to the last discussion I had with Pedro, they may have trouble, and if he's here, would you like to speak to the issue of Charles? Charles is here.
I actually worked on this project. Sure.
Yeah, state your name.
My name is Charles Leo, and I worked on this product, project. I just drove in from Boston, so I'm a little bit frazzled, it's like a four-hour drive. But I just have to say, initially, there was no format specified. He did not come to us and say, we need a JPEG, we need a GIF, we need a PNG, we need a bitmap. There was no format specified. I took the liberty to go out, because I know photography, and say, okay, well, we're gonna provide a RAW format. And it gets very technical, I'm not gonna bore you with the details about it, but it's the most basic information. When we first did the project, I took the photographs, I believe, early April, and there was still snow on the ground. The grass was brown, as you can see there. I would not rely on what you're seeing in that image right there, because first off, this room is lit, and then the projector isn't projecting the proper colors. You really have to look at it on a monitor or in print to determine what the colors really look like. That is not a good representation, that's the first problem that I see. Secondly, contrast has nothing to do with color, and you should know that. Contrast and color are two separate components, because you can have a black and white image that has contrast, am I correct? So you're wrong about that. There's been so many issues with your criticism, your critique towards the work that I have performed, that it's made me run around in circles. You know, I had to drive all the way up here as a result of this.
I'm gonna ask you, I'm gonna ask you to keep your comments to what the subject is and the corrections that need to be, all the other stuff I don't want to hear.
Initially, when we presented the first round, there's been so many rounds that I get a little bit confused at times, and I haven't been here for every town meeting. When we presented it, one of the comments that you had was, okay, how come these colors look so different from these colors? And you're showing a picture of people playing golf in shorts with the grass, the grass is green. And then you take our picture, which obviously is the dead, you know, still snow on the ground, nobody's playing golf, and you can't, it's apples and oranges, you can't compare, you know, green grass to brown dead grass. And so you're like, well, you know, the colors really have no real impact in the position, the location, what's blocking what.
I agree with that. If I may just make a request, because this can be answered very, it's a question that can be answered so simply. The metadata tell me for your RAW image that it was taken RAW plus JPEG?
If that's what it says, I'd have to, I'd have to look at the metadata.
So can you provide the JPEG?
I mean, there's so many rounds and rounds and revisions. My point going back is, is that it seems like the more information that I provide you, the more you pull things apart, which is completely irrelevant to the scope. I mean, that format was not specified, nor was image sizes, which is another issue that you brought up. I mean, I provided images that were a lot larger than what was initially presented by the previous visualizers. I mean, I took the liberty to go through a RAW format. When I adjusted it to what I thought, okay, this is exactly the range of my vision, what I perceive the colors as, you came back and you complained that, okay, these colors look off. So this round, I said enough of this, I'm gonna go present just the RAW format, the basic colors not adjusted as it comes out of the camera, which is what you requested, and that's what you're seeing there. But again, that image up on that screen is not representative as to what you have in print or when you view it on a monitor, and you have to recognize that.
Again, if you're able to produce the JPEG, just one image.
Why should I? It's irrelevant, that's my whole point, you're just wasting my time, you're wasting everybody's time here.
The reason it's relevant is ultimately in a RAW image format...
I disagree.
You're able to...
You can't even get contrast right, I disagree.
All right, hold on.
In this process, what we try to do is we try to replicate what the human eye will see. In a RAW image format, like you have, the operator has a lot of leeway to adjust the photograph however he sees fits. If you have the JPEG that goes along with it that had the automatic image processing, it doesn't have as much information as the RAW image format, you're exactly correct about that. But it will give information on what the human eye would see, and that's all I'm, that's all I'm saying. And is that, is that we know it was taken, because the metadata that's tagged to the RAW image file tells us it was taken. So we know it exists, so provide it, and then we can, we can see how different it is from this, and then we can move on.
So what's the next one? Just keep on going with it.
Okay. Again, materiality is up to you. Minor issue, something that we noticed very recently, it's between 7.4 and 7.5.
If I may interrupt, he's had a habit of zooming into images. The request was what the human eye sees, and that image is zoomed in, it's blown up, and from that distance, you will not see that.
Let's do that, I want to, I want to let him go without being interrupted, and then I'll let you go in, Charles, after that, you can come, okay?
Okay, the only...
We can't have crossfire here, it's tricky.
7.5 was not in the May version, it was added between May and July. A house goes missing, and it's, I think, because of the camera. I don't consider, I consider this minor, I don't think it's material, but it's, that is up to you all, because the 7.4 has what's there, and it's just the next one over seems to be shifted a little bit. It's something that I noticed. And I also have some suggestions on text, which I did not provide to this board, just essentially...
On text, text or test?
Text.
Text.
My belief is that it should be more neutral when it's talking about what it, what you're seeing, as opposed to, there's a lot of value-added text in here, which I think, if you're just neutral, say what it is, and it reads better, and it makes it a more neutral document of disclosing what the impact's on, which I can provide to the applicant of the board, but I don't have those in the presentation. Those are, those are the issues, those are the tech, the remaining technical issues.
A couple of them, okay.
Okay? So now we can move on to the substantive, the substantive issues as I see them. Okay, so confirmatory visual simulations, this is unique, right? This doesn't exist for any other project that I've ever been a part of, and it came out of the FEIS process for this project. And the bold part, what is confirmatory visual simulations? They need to show that the project has the level of screening depicted in the FEIS, or the applicant may be asked for an expanded landscape plan and/or be subject to an SCIS, supplemental environmental impact statement. That's what it says in the finding statement, and that's why they're doing this. You can also use them for SPO compliance, because you have the information. So what I'm gonna do for a few images is look at what's shown in the FEIS, what's said in the FEIS, and then what's shown in the current simulation, and what's said in the current simulation. And I will do this for all the viewpoints, I will do them for view, the ones that I think are most important. So this is viewpoint one, which is the view from Dela Verne Hill. This is from the FEIS, so you haven't seen this picture in a long time. The way the FEIS images were done, you had existing conditions, you had no mitigation, meaning just white buildings without landscaping, and then you had mitigation, which is landscaping and color. The text here is what it says. Buildings C6, C7, and C8 are not visible in the image due to the natural building colors and landscaping, which were the ones that were over here. The four single-family homes at the southern end of the site are reduced in impact in this image, which are the, you can barely see them over here. If, is it possible to turn off one of the bank lights?
Yeah.
Barely see them right here. Okay, so this is viewpoint 1-1, existing. This is the simulation, the buildings equivalent to C6 and C7 are visible. 1.2, existing, buildings equivalent to C8 are visible. Viewpoint 1.3, existing, the four or six single-family homes at the southern end of the site are now 26 over there. And we can talk about that, because I think it's, it's important to understand that the images in the FEIS changed.
Quick question for you now.
Yes.
I know they've talked in the past, I mean, Silo's, Charles talks in the past about the zooming, some of the pictures are taken zoomed.
These are not zoomed.
Those are not zoomed?
No.
Right there, because the houses, the buildings look like they did. They look big compared to what I would have thought they were.
They are, they are taken from here unzoomed, uncropped. Unzoomed, uncropped.
All right, okay.
That's, and I encourage you, if you, if you have it with you, or would you like to borrow my copy, you can look along, all right? So let me talk for a second about, about this, because the FEIS simulations don't include most of this. All right, that's the estate homes in the southern end of the site, that climb up, that go up the hill. What I've done here is taken the 2008 FEIS plan and compared it with the 2014 plan. It's, I think, actually not quite the most current 2014 plan, there may be one or two houses that are, that are different, but I took this from something I did a little bit ago. Okay, so the orange is the 2008 FEIS plan, all right? What you'll see here is that we have buildings here, we have almost no buildings here, right? We have a few that line this, this area over here. Now, what happened was, some buildings got moved here as part of the mitigation in the FEIS. All right, so these buildings up here, they got moved, a few over here got moved. Ultimately, 11 buildings were relocated from here to here. And so there were, there were 17. The previous, we talked about the four buildings back there, there are really six, depends on where you draw the boundary, but, so ultimately, what matters is that there were 17 in here in the 2009 approved MDP. Okay, but now there are 26.
My understanding on that though is also, I remember Dr. Clement mentioning that that was a favorable move at one time, because they were moving from the ridge, close proximity to the Dela Verne Hill corner down to the southern end, but they'd be much further away.
It was done for a reason, the reason was for mitigation. And they, this, there's like a brook here, and you eliminated all of this, there's a road that went up here, and all that road is gone, and that little cluster of houses...
And that's grating.
There were reasons to do it. I'm not saying there weren't reasons to do it. I'm not saying there weren't reasons to do it. I'm explaining that the simulations don't show all these buildings in the FEIS, and it's saying that it has to show the same level of, of, you know, of vegetation or screening. Okay, so I just wanted to make certain that it's clear. So this is viewpoint two of the FEIS, FEIS existing. This was with proposed no mitigation. Remember, we had the gigantic hotel over here. And this is where the houses that ended up getting moved to the southern end of the site. This is with the vegetation, and the screening, and the colors. The tree knoll over here is proposed to be extended to the right to screen the hotel, the golf club, the clubhouse and the club villas, golf villas. Additional landscaping screening is proposed to the area north of the golf villas. Plantings are placed below the viewpoint, but not above the buildings intended to be screened. And while these plantings do screen the buildings, they do not screen the distant hills. So what it's saying here is there, there's a lot of planting that's down here in front of the buildings. So what do we see now? This one, I made a panorama to try to make it easier for you to see. It's, they're individually shown in the, in the book. This is proposed with no mitigation. There's little, very little vegetative screening proposed around visible buildings. And instead, the screening relies upon the hedge. The hedge that's right by the road. And it's very effective from this viewpoint for screening. It's, you see a few things up here in the southern estate homes, but for the, for the village center proper, it appears to be very effective. Okay, I'm gonna skip ahead to viewpoint seven. You were asking about this, Tony.
Right.
They made very wide panoramas in the, in the FEIS. FEIS existing, FEIS proposed, no mitigation. It includes these vineyard cottages, which we're not looking at right now, so they should be ignored. Proposed, through the use of subdued tones, architectural roofs and facades, and planting materials that both partially screen and break up building mass, the site structures are reduced in impact. So, I did not make a big panorama for this. These are, these are unprompted, enlarged. Viewpoint one simulated. What you'll see from this viewpoint is, is that the onsite plantings are small, and they do little screening, they're not designed for screening, they're like shrubs for yards and things like that. Instead, existing trees to remain do most of the screening. And there's, you know, a fair amount of screening that occurs. Except when you're looking straight at it, but still, you see some, some of these trees are kept. This part over here, you don't see much in the center. And then viewpoint 7.4 simulated. So, according to the finding statement, the confirmatory visual simulations need to show that the project has the level of screening depicted in the FEIS, or the applicant may be asked for an expanded landscape plan and/or be subject to an SEIS. In my view of this, it's difficult to argue objectively that this level of screening is shown. Because, largely because the previous one was so exceptional. Not saying this is bad, I'm saying that the previous one had showed exceptional screening. You know, there are some, which leads me to questions. Can the finding statement be changed? Should it be changed? How would that be done? And should it be an issue that's left open to the public hearing? I know the issue of the hedge is something that we've discussed. Is it a good idea, is it a bad idea? The hedge is really the only screen that's, that's very effective, and it is effective. But it's only effective from viewpoint one, not higher, I'm sorry. It's only effective from viewpoint two and three, not higher. When you're up higher on the hill, you see right over it. So, I mean, I know that's something that we've discussed, but then if you take out the hedge, and there's no screening, then how do you meet this requirement of the confirmatory visual simulations showing the same level of screening? It's, it's an open question. And, you know, I think that maybe Dave can weigh in in terms of, in terms of how closely the finding statement needs to be followed. I can move on to the SPO standards, or if you want to talk about this?
May I address some of the questions that have been brought up?
Sure.
Okay, so, a couple of things that, that I think we need to be aware between the two simulations that happened. One is, the FEIS did not include any of the houses aware in the, towards the southern end of the property, which is acknowledging the, in the special use permit, that they do create a higher visual impact. However, we were protecting the, we were protecting grading, we were protecting the salamander spring on the top, and I think it was acknowledged by all the consultants that this was something that, that we wanted to move on, which was ultimately, when you look at any of the, any of the visuals, you'll definitely see those houses. Furthermore, one of the things that we did in this application was, we took houses where, or roads where we say we were gonna have an 18-foot road, and we're putting 50-foot clearing paths. Because George James wanted to show that we were clearing the whole mountain. That's not our intent, wasn't there. But rather than debate what could be seen or could not be seen, or get into a whole debate of how to model this thing, we just said, take a 50-foot path, clear path, and just clear the whole thing. And that's part of the reason also why you can see it. Additionally, from Delverne Hill, the reason why you see a little bit more without the hedge is because the, the old plan, given that we had a large hotel, we were planting a lot of large plants around Delverne Hill and expanding the tree knoll. The consensus we got here from the planning board back in December was that they would rather not do that, and even if you see some buildings in the bottom, allow, keep the, keep the views open. And that's the reason why we ended up doing a lower hedge that will have some, some, you'll be able to block some of the lower buildings, but not necessarily block the entire view. We also provided an image without the hedge, just so the planning board could guide us whether we wanna be able to see through or not see through. So if the extent is that we want us to plant large trees, we can definitely do that, and meet the same, you know, the same mitigations that we had before. Do we wanna put some mitigations that we had in the past, which we didn't take into consideration clearing 50 feet? We can do the same. Where it comes to the single-family homes in the southern end, the issue at that is, we either put the houses all the way back by the, by the salamanders, or we had, we had, we put them in the southern end. And one of the things that we did there is, we were actually using existing trails that are, that are there to minimize grading and minimize impacts as we move forward. And as you can see, we're actually reducing by far, even if we have more houses, we are reducing by far the grading in existing forested habitats in that specific area. So, to say that the old plan, which was approved, would have been better, it is not true. One thing is, we never, we never did a visual simulation for it. And that's, and that's, that's the difference. We're trying to, we're not comparing apples to apples. We're not comparing what was approved against what we're doing. We're comparing the FEIS plan that had pretty different simulations.
Right.
Thank you.
I have only a couple of responses to that. Number one, I thought the new simulations took into account actual grading up on the hill. I didn't realize.
No, we, we spent way too much time, way too much debate between two consultants. Our, our, the whole thing, we said is, we're gonna do 50-foot path, and that's what we took. We, wherever we thought there might be a little more grading, we just said, just do it, and wipe all the trees.
I misunderstood that. I thought that, because it had change.
Correct, your, correct. Your, your comments to us was, we should be more conservative and not be as conservative as we were before. So, we did, in good faith, we went and we took that approach with, with that whole section.
Right, and, okay, and thank you for explaining that, that was not through me. So...
The other thing that I think's a little misleading is, if, if I were to take the FEIS plan, and I take it out of the visual panorama, is very different when you're seeing the whole picture of the valley, and you see a small section that has houses than when you're just looking at one section that has houses, like we just did in the last viewpoint. And I'm happy to provide the planning board with panoramas like we did in the past, and it's drastic, the difference, when you put them all together stitched up. It, you'll see the whole valley, and you see very little than when you're actually taking one, one camera shot at just one specific angle.
I agree with that. But that is, that is a reasonable comment. And we've done, we did the, we did one of these with a panorama. The others were, are very wide, and they were hard to make, and so we didn't do that for all of them. The only thing I will say, just regarding the standard, is there's, a bar was set very high in the FEIS. And I'm not saying one is better than the other, right? And this is like, there's no value judgment here. I mean, what I'm saying is, is that this is what the FEIS says. The FEIS says these buildings will not be visible due to natural building colors and landscaping. The buildings are visible.
Correct, again, but I can, the reason why they weren't visible in that specific picture is because we were extending the tree knoll north. And if I do that, I'll make those buildings not be visible. And the consensus we got before was not to put large trees in that whole area. Then, you know, additionally, if you go past the FEIS into the finding statements, and into the, and into the special use permit, it was acknowledged that some of the, the buildings on the bottom will be visible, and that it would increase the visual impact. However, it was the balance between grading and protecting the water corridors up there justified having the houses down there. The other thing you're not mentioning here is, we had a 75-foot building, which was clearly visible in all of the pictures, which we don't have anymore.
He mentioned it before about the hotel.
Yeah, the hotel.
But Pedro is correct in one sense, that, you know, a lot of what has been taken up related to screening has been at the request of other consultants, planning board members, you know, planning board discussions. I mean, when they had some of the trees up on top of Delverne Hill, we said, take them out. We don't wanna block off the viewpoints. Obviously, the knoll, we're, we're real sensitive to anything that might end up growing and blocking off either a part or, you know, major, larger portion.
I get it.
We've actually been asked by the public to have the DOT clear a lot of the trees that are up there. And in order to bring back the views to what they used to be in the 50s. And we've, we've offered that, if DOT wanted to do that, we'll be willing to help cover the cost for the town of Armenia.
It's, it's up to you all. But here's the thing I'm saying, is that I'm trying to square a circle here, right? Because you have what the FEI, the finding statement says, right?
I understand.
And that's why I posed the question, do you change the finding statement? How do you change the finding statement?
But a good thing, we are redlining, we are changing the finding statement. We are actually redlining the finding statement.
And most of the, right, and I've read those, and that, that part was unchanged.
Because we hadn't done it.
Okay.
So what we were waiting to do was do the new visual analysis, do a rewrite of the visual analysis, and then go back and change the finding statement. The redline that we provided for the finding statement, first of all, is not our document to change. All we were asked was, the planning board asked us, could you redline the finding statement so that we can easily understand where some of the changes are gonna be? And that's all we did. Since then, that was done in October last year. Since then, there's been substantial changes to the plan to make it better all the way here. So, so what I'm assuming is, after we have a public hearing, and we receive all of the comments from the public, the planning board will have to assess how, how the planning board changes the finding statement, not us.
Dave, no, a quick question. What George is talking about, I understand, and it's correct. You know, they and Pedro, they are responding in large parts of what, you know, people have talked about that needs to be done relating to the building trees. There was discussion about the DOT taking trees that have grown in over the years that are now blocking parts of their view, and make it worse. And there was also a discussion we had relating to, everybody had related to, are their buildings going into this big flat portion that's being excavated on Delverne Hill? The answer to that was no. And what's the proper way to go about addressing both issues here? Is there a proper method to change the findings? Allow for redline, redlining of it? Going with what people are talking about, what needs to be done visually, or?
Well, as Pedro noted, the board is gonna change the finding statements. I mean, you have to change the finding statement. And they've provided us with a redline of their proposed changes based upon the original submission. Pedro's right that, you know, we're gonna have to go through after the public hearing, see the comments from the public and the agencies, you're gonna have to go through, and you're gonna have to figure out how you wanna change that finding statement, whether you agree with some of the comments, changes, revisions that the applicant has made, whether you wanna make some additional ones. So, and that document is your document, you guys are in control of that. So that's gonna be another process that's gonna have to be gone through, you know, when we get to the end of the public hearing. So you're gonna have to look at what George is saying, and what the applicant's consultants are saying, and you're gonna have to sort of balance that, and figure out, you know, which way you wanna go with it.
Is that gonna address what George's presenting us concern right now?
Yeah, it might, because, I mean, you know, George is relying upon the statements that are in the findings. And, you know, you guys put them there originally for a very good reason. You know, but that was for a previous project. It's a project that's now much different.
And it's been more thought given along the way.
More thought given to it and that kinda stuff. So, you know, you're gonna have to think about that. You're also gonna have to look at the visual analysis that the applicant has done for this project, this revised project, and George's substantive comments on that, and then you're gonna have to come to a conclusion.
And I really like to hear the public's opinion. Public's really important, this, we talked about. The public is really important to have this, you know, give us a good idea of it.
All right, at this point, you wanna go ahead?
Yeah, yeah, and then I'll move on to the SPO compliance. And there's section four in here, which details SPO compliance. There are a few things, most of it, I think, is all right. The very first one is a judgment. It's a judgment for this board, where you take all of this evidence, and then you, you make a call. You know, the, much of the development is within the seating protection overlay, will not significantly impericenic character, it will be aesthetically compatible with its surroundings. And, you know, for that, I say that that's a judgment for, for this board to make, and using evidence that you have in front of you. And as it is now, the text as written supports that statement. And number three. Number three is, will locating cluster buildings and other structures in a manner that minimizes their visibility from public spaces? I know we put, for mitigation purposes, more buildings into this section over here. This is phase two in the south. The approved, 2009 approved MDP at 17 houses, we now have 26 houses. Change of nine, an increase of 53%. The disturbed area approximately is about, an increase of about 42%. This area is very visible, you can see it from nearly every single simulation.
Right, but again, the increase there is directly related to a 100% decrease in another area.
No, by the way, the numbers he's showing in there are overall numbers, that's not disturbance area. That you're overlaying, the blue...
Let me be clear.
I'm sorry.
So, so your approved MDP, which includes the mitigation measures, right? So the FEIS had four or six houses, depending on where you draw the boundary, right? And you moved 11 houses into it because of mitigation. Salamander, the road. But after that, in the new plan, another nine got moved up there. This is, that had nothing to do with mitigation. You know, there are roads, there are roads going up there, and they're developed up on both sites. And it is in the most visible part. And it's hard to say that it's clustered. And I'm just pointing out, this is a standard in the SPO, cluster, locating cluster buildings and other structures in a manner that minimizes their visibility from public places. What you had was an increase in this area specifically. Overall, the project is smaller. In this area, the most visible part of the project, there was a considerable increase. And they're not particularly clustered. And I put that out there as a, something you may wanna consider. It's a, it's a standard of the SPO, and you may wanna, you may wanna consider, well, does, ask the question, does this meet that standard?
One quick question before we go to that sheet. How did you calculate the acres? So, that's not disturbance, then, it is incorrect.
Okay.
Because we actually, Dr. Clemens asked us to calculate that, and we're way lower than the old one.
Okay, I mean, I just, these were just brought around, using the same standards. And again, it's approximate. The number of houses went up by 53%. The, the number of, the level of disturbance is lower than that, because... than that because there are roads in there already.
Manny, you got something real quick?
Additionally, that's phase two, so those have not actually been sighted. They are technically sighted, but more specifically, they're sighted based on the conditions having the hills. Something else for the board to consider.
The hedge has a fence. The, I'll read it. Chain link fences and stockades and other fence designs that block visual access to land in a scenic road corridor shall be prohibited unless such fences are necessary to pre-screen or to screen a pre-existing use that does not conform to the requirements in this section. Okay, so the hedge uses a fence. It's part of the screening. It may be what you want. It may not be. It may need a waiver. The wastewater treatment plant is not only within the scenic road corridor, it is mostly placed within the green buffer of the scenic road corridor. And it has a fence around it.
What kind of fence was that? Was that a three-board fence?
You know, I, here, it's shown on the plan. I'm not sure what kind of fence it is.
Like a three-board fence?
I don't think it says on the plan. Maybe it does.
The old one, the old one which was approved called for a chain link fence. Right now, we can do whichever one.
So.
Yeah, we need it, ultimately, you need it for security on the, it's required. So it might be a requirement by the health department to actually have a chain link fence. I don't know.
Just pointing it out that it's part of the, the standards of the SPO, is that they have fences. I also will mention the maintenance facility. The viewpoints that were studied came from the FEIS. The maintenance facility was not in there. This is a new facility. It is within the trail scenic protection corridor for the most part. And my question is, it's a question to this board, is do you believe that you have enough information to evaluate it visually? You have a plan, and then you have elevations of the buildings that are going to be there, and you have uses that will be located within the trail scenic protection corridor. It wasn't studied at the level of detail as everything else.
Well, George, with regards to the trail, the trail's 20 feet below the road at that section.
Okay.
So during that whole section, you can't see the property.
Okay.
And it was modeled in the visuals that we did. It was modeled in our visuals.
Okay, but you don't really see it from the viewpoints that we have. You may want to, you may want to know what it looks, what it may look like from, or at least as a section, showing a line of sight profile from the trail. Because this won't be an attractive use. You're going to have storage of materials, and it's going to be within the actual buffer itself.
Can you see that on the road, or no?
No. You know, I don't, I know there's an elevation change and...
There's a 100-foot buffer line, so it's over 100 feet.
And it's proposed to be screened.
And it will be screened.
Oh, there's landscaping proposed for that?
Yeah.
Brush and scrub, so.
Like, what's the tallest tree in there, like 30 feet maybe?
30 feet. There are trees right now you can't see from the road end. And the elevation picks up quite a bit towards the right.
My point to the board is that this was not studied at the same level of detail as everything else, and it is within one of the, the trail protection corridor.
But if it's within the trail protection corridor, not within the SPO, but hold on, let me finish.
The SPO has three components.
But hold on, so if it's not within the SPO, it's within the trail. And within the trail, you can't see in because you're 30 feet below.
The SPO has three components. It's the scenic protection zone, it is the scenic road protection zone, and the trail protection zone. So they are all parts of this SPO. However, generically, we've been talking about the scenic protection zone as the SPO, but according to how the code is written, they're all part of the SPO.
Could you go back to the elevation drawings of those buildings there?
Of the buildings?
Yeah, I showed the barn, barn style.
The intent of the area is to look like a farm set, so farm-style buildings and...
Nice.
No, no questions.
I think this is something we talked about at the last meeting too, is that, I mean, as much planning, we can plan till we're blue in the face, and we're going to probably, you know, we're going to find that, we're going to have to come back, and there's going to be things that we don't see in this planning, you know, process where we maybe have to plant a tree here or plant a tree there. It's impossible to know, you know, exactly what it's going to look like or how all the details are going to play it out. And we talked about having some sort of process in place to revisit any issues that we find in any of these, with any of these problems that we may have, like if we, you know, find that from one particular angle, we're not, you know, mitigating, you know, a problem or whatever. I mean, this is something that we're going to have to revisit at some point, most likely, right? And what is the process for that, to come back if we find that we've had, need to make changes?
Well, at this, at this point, you're, they are going into site plan, right? This is the time to make these comments. And if, they're not going to be coming back again for, you know, to go through site plan again for something like this. So if you're not, if there are questions you want answered, yeah, now is the time.
Yeah, but I mean, I guess my point being that it's impossible to know exactly what it's, you know, what it's going to, if there's, I mean, how do you say?
Well, to know what the finished product is going to look like, I mean, we can look at it, right? I think it's what you're saying is, we can look at it paper and visuals all day, but until it's actually done, it might be different.
Exactly.
Yeah, you're right.
I'm uncomfortable with that kind of a claim though, such a slippery slope. Why say that about this and not about the whole thing?
Exactly.
Yes.
I mean, for instance, like, this is site plan, right, where you have the buildings that are, buildings are largely placed closest to the road and closest to where the trail is, within the corridor. And I think the corridor here is narrower than the road corridor, I think it's a much narrower than it could be. You know, could some buildings be placed back for their way outside the corridor?
So you start going up elevation.
Right, well, I mean, but...
Actually, we placed those buildings with Dr. Clemens.
You're essentially letting the board know that you might want to give them more consideration.
You might want to get more information because this is, this was not studied to the level of detail as everything else. That's really what I want to communicate to you. You have a plan, you have elevations, and that's what you have on this.
So George, what additional information do you think would be helpful on that particular facility?
I would love to see, at minimum, I would love to see a section, a line of sight profile from the, from the trail, right? It's designed to protect the view of the trail. You're saying that the elevation changes and you can't see anything?
We can go tomorrow and take a picture and send it to you.
Or you, or, you know, a photograph. I mean, a photograph of what it looks like. If you're saying that there's all these trees in the green buffer that's going to block the view, great. We don't know that.
You can't see, you are, the trail is, that's the road, and you're here. So I can send you a picture tomorrow.
Well, you understand what I'm saying though.
Partly the part where the board, the board where, you know, you're making that recommendation, and we'll take it from there, okay?
Very good. Wastewater treatment plant. The wastewater treatment plant is barely visible in viewpoint 75, and is shown from a very long distance away. But I'd say, but we have elevations. It is located largely, not only within the scenic road corridor, it's located mostly within the green buffer of the scenic road corridor. It's very close to the road.
But it is located in the same spot as it was approved.
That's true.
With a much smaller footprint than it was before.
And significant reduction of steep slope disturbance because as you move up the slope, we've recorded all, you know, the building footprint strong, so you come off that slope.
I bring it to your attention, I know previously, it wasn't studied in great detail in terms of, because there wasn't, there wasn't a plan for like what the facility was going to be. And it was also going to provide some...
Actually, by the way, not really. There was actually construction documents in the, in the...
There are construction documents. Well, they, it wasn't studied to the same level as everything else.
What kind of landscaping is proposed along there?
There's a landscaping plan.
Yes, it is.
So have you...
There's an expanded landscaping plan being higher set.
Okay, so I guess my question would be, have you looked at the landscaping plan? And what is your opinion on whether or not that actually provides a suitable screen for the building? I mean, because it seems to me that you could probably screen a lot of that building with landscaping, given its location along the road.
There is a landscape plan I've seen.
And if the tension actually sets specifically that the building provides screening from the road, that's a tension.
Sure, right.
You won't see that, so the building acts as screening.
I just, I haven't studied those technical, I'm just a lawyer, but I just, my question is, can that be screened or has it already been mostly...
There is a landscape plan, there is a landscape plan in there. Exactly right. And are the trees tall enough to screen the building?
Not initially.
Not initially, yes, exactly. That's why, they will be small.
Well, how tall, how tall the landscaping along there?
About five feet, was it four, four, three feet?
I'm sure it was probably 10 foot.
Yeah.
10 foot?
It's a, I bring it up to you.
10 foot initial installation?
Industrial facility located within a scenic road corridor within the green buffer. It's sewage, it's wastewater treatment plant. It can be very attractive. I know modern facilities are much more attractive than what we may have in our mind.
Like a little barn look, right?
I have to, I have to bring it to your attention.
Yeah, yeah, that's right, good.
And that's what, that's what I'm doing. Yeah, and this is, this is what I have for you today.
Yeah.
All right? And so what I would like to do, at minimum, is to prepare some suggested text changes to this, which you've offered to provide, text that I could redline.
At this point, I'm a little bit, I'm actually a little bit shocked with what we're hearing today, especially since we've been through this process for six months now, actually eight months. And some of the comments that we've received today were comments that could have been easily addressed eight months ago. Eight months ago, we could have said, "Hey, could you send me a cross-section of the maintenance building?" It hasn't moved since we submitted in October. Eight months ago, we could have said, "What's happening with the treatment plant?" So for us is, it is a little shocking that we're hearing this today.
The plan was in flux. I mean, we used to, that in May, I know that there was, there was worker, workforce housing planned for next to the...
They did, the plan didn't move. The only plan, the wastewater, the both, the maintenance facility and this has not changed. And what I'm concerned with is, we've been trying to be as accomplishing as we can. We've provided a 180-page document. We've hired now four visual consultants who, we've gone more than above than what we can, and it always seems that at the last minute, it's always like, we'll get more. So now we're going to provide text, we're going to go back and forth.
I don't want to sit here all night going back. Give me your information, give the board your information.
And that's, and let me conclude with just a final thought, all right? Back in the 90s, we used to make these decisions with line of sight profiles and USHA maps. Photosimulation has evolved tremendously over the last 15 years. And I really do try not to nitpick, but I also know what the state of the practice is. And I have to tell you what I would do in my office. And that's what I've been doing. And that's what my recommendations are today, is I wouldn't, I would make sure that the colors represented what people actually saw. Doesn't mean that you have to have that to make decisions. We used to make decisions with a heck of a lot less.
So if we could bring, if I could bring proof that that is incorrect in your work, in your work, to the planning board, would that suffice to solve?
So all I was looking for was the JPG that was taken with the...
No, I'm talking, you're saying that our visual analysis is not to your level of work. So if I could bring your level of work...
No, listen, I just want to get, I want to get this...
The problem with Pedro is that he would have to find a project that is exactly parallel that his office has worked.
No, I can find a project where there is 80-foot clearing paths, and he's only showing 10 foot.
Yeah, but it has to be parallel in every way because...
It is, it's on a steep slope. It has a 20-foot retaining wall. He actually sends us the CAD drawings.
It has to have the same town documents, it has to be parallel every single way.
My only point, listen, I praised this. I, you've heard me, I said it was a good job.
Well, my main, my main thing, I thought tonight was going to be, we're bringing this to the public. Also, your concerns we got, but I'm saying now, we're really, we're really here to bring this to the public because I really, every planning board always says, "Bring it to the public, embrace the public, see what they're saying, see the visual, see about the way, see the whole thing." And that's what we're trying to do tonight, trying to, are we there to the public for this kind of a thing? And then we move on. Now, but we got, we got it. I mean, we got it.
Do you have any other comments George made?
Yeah, that's...
Okay. What I want to do at this point is, I want to throw it out to the board for discussion. I mean, George has given his recommendation summary. You've heard from Pedro, Charles, and everybody else. I mean, we need to make determination as to whether we're ready to proceed with public hearing. And I'm talking specifically related to the visual simulations that have been submitted and where we're at today. There's nothing saying we can't take recommendations that George has made, and after the public hearing, request further information or prior to the public hearing. But we need to make determination tonight as to whether we stay with the public hearing or not.
I think we have enough information to go to a public...
I agree.
Yeah, I want to take it to the public. I want to hear what they got to say.
I think we have enough with that.
All right. Bill, I hear from you. You're fine with it.
I want the public to really try and...
All right.
We've been at this a while.
We're going to take what we've got, take your recommendations. I think we need to work on them some more, but...
I think we're there pretty close, right?
We're going to need time, I think, to further discuss what it is within those recommendations we'd want to go after.
Like you said, 95% he's happy with. I mean, just the, it's just this thing going on right now, they're going back and forth with, but, you know, we're pretty, we're there.
George, does this presentation tonight constitute your substantive comments on the visuals? Or did you, or do you have something else that you were going to submit?
Well, I was actually going, I was actually going to look for the board for some guidance on that because you previously asked me not to be very formal with my comments.
No, I just, I would assume that you go ahead and submit whatever you've got. I think the board has to take whatever you give us and make the decisions that are necessary to move forward.
Well, this is, this, I don't have a written deck, meaning a paper showing detailing all of these. This is what I have right now. I can put it into that kind of format if you'd like.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, if you...
Pardon me? Absolutely. That's, it would be derivative from this.
So, well, if you want, if you want him to do that, he needs to do it relatively quickly if you're going to decide you want to hold a public hearing because the public should have it available, I mean, you know, and I'm assuming, it sounds like he's done most of it anyway, so...
What's most important is this. And if you allow me, I think there are some issues with text which I need to write, and that's it. I mean, it really...
Yeah, I think to summarize what you gave us tonight, without having to give all the technical explanations, wouldn't be that difficult, though, for submission I make. And, you know, and then people can question and speak to the substance after the fact.
Okay, yes, I can put something like that.
So how quick would it take you to get us that information?
Tomorrow's fine.
Early next week?
Next week.
Monday?
Next week. All right? I mean, when do you need it? Is this...
Well, I would like to, so we, so it's there for the public.
Talk about, right, but we're all here.
Okay, I will, I will put something together. Essentially, what, it's going to be this plus a little cover on top of it.
Put it this way, the law requires the public notice to be out five days before the hearing, so you have to provide it by then.
Okay. Okay.
Okay?
All right, working backwards.
So how does the public get to hear the recommendations that you mentioned, I, Mr. James, are they going to be printed, available at the planning board office on the Silo Bridge site, I need to know.
Tonya, we just, we just said that he needs to get this submitted earlier next week, has to be in at least five days before the public hearing, so people can review it.
So everything he said tonight was going to be tomorrow?
No, no, all the technical explanations, no, what we need from him are the recommendations that he's making, a short summary of the recommendations that he's making, not all the explanation that went with it tonight.
But, but I will give you a copy of this as well, I mean, essentially as the appendix, because it's most.
But the PowerPoint should be submitted, yes, okay.
Yes, the PowerPoint, I believe, is public record, it's.
Okay. Thank you, George.
Do we want to discuss the rest of the documents that we submitted today?
We're just starting, yeah. I was wanting to let George go first, I don't know if he wanted to stay all night, or, plus I knew he'd be a good, a good part of this discussion, so. All right, the, I've got my own list, let me just kind of go through that real quick and see what I can get knocked off here. Subdivision flat submission, I mean, we've got it there, okay? Julie, you want to be looking at that?
That's more of a very.
Okay. Because there's a few things that we need to make sure that we don't have any major problems with prior to the public hearing. And that we make sure that they're available to be reviewed by the public before the public hearing, should any problems come out of there, so. This is a risk that Silo is assuming at this point, if there are issues within any of these documents that are being submitted, that are major problem areas, that's the one thing that could impact what's going to happen here.
So if everything was submitted to the recent town hall, also in the library?
Correct.
And the other part of the. Your website too?
Yes, it will be up in a.
Yes?
Couple of days, yes.
Okay, and everything that you, I'm sorry, everything that you've submitted to date is on your website?
To date.
To date.
We're making sure of that.
Yes, please do.
The latest version.
We will, but one of, one of, one of the questions that Peter had was, can we do one final of every single document that would be submitted?
Yeah, that's what we talked about earlier tonight.
Right, you don't need the iterative, iterative process, you need the final.
No, I need the final, yeah, finals.
He was saying, he thought it was a final.
Yeah, it just needs to get up on the website as soon as you can.
Now, the other, the other part, David mentioned earlier, once the county has to have this ten days prior. So Monday.
Yeah, this is a.
The county needs to get a complete package of everything submitted to them, you need to make contact with the county to make sure that.
County planning.
Yes, to make sure that's coordinated, they know that's coming out, and they know there's a timeframe involved, and that they get everything.
But we're not closing written comments off the public hearing, so people still have their abilities.
No, I'm just talking about the regulatory standards that have been, I mean, the county's got to have it ten days prior.
And we have a list of everything, but do you know what the county?
They need everything.
They need everything.
They need everything, they need, they need the full application, so it's all the documents, the final of all the documents that you've submitted.
We won't provide in the red line, we'll provide in the final line.
Yes, the finals, yeah.
Well, but for the, you know, for the secret finding statement, I mean, those are red lines, I mean, you should.
That's all you have, yeah.
That's all you have, so you need to submit it as a red line. You can't submit that as a final document, because the board hasn't approved that as a final document. When you submitted it to us as a red line, that should go through.
But something, I think what Pedro's more, the HMP, was we gave you a red line, so you saw the changes, we can now give that to you as final, you don't.
Yes, because that's your document, you say.
The county doesn't need to see that in red line version.
We have red line after red line after red line.
Yeah.
You don't need all the changes.
Yeah, that's fine, because it's your document that you're submitting to the board for consideration, but I think for the finding statement, that's going to have to be red line, yeah.
Well, we're not submitting to them a finding statement.
Well, no, you should, because that's part of the, your submission. Whatever, whatever you have submitted, you only submitted one finding statement, one red line version, the finding statement?
Yeah, that was.
Yeah, so.
And that was just a.
We'll have to put a cover letter on it.
A note on, yeah, so, yeah, so there's the change.
Yeah, they'll work, yeah, they'll understand what's going on. Okay, next item I have is the Minne fishing game club, the details are being worked out with them, I see you submitted tonight a, basically, a footprint of where the shooting ranges will be constructed, underground ranges. Because the other aspect of that is, will there be approvals needed through the planning board in order to construct those applications?
Basically, preliminary conversations between the engineer and the building department, it's just a building department permit.
So you've talked to John already about this?
Rich Raines has been talking about that.
He has?
Yes.
Okay.
I believe Rich or the folks from the, from the gun club, not us.
Is there more detailed, anything more detailed that shows the actual construction and what's done?
No, they're, they're trying, they went to another club.
One in Jersey?
Yeah, and then they came back, it's essentially a small building, and then they have a pipe that goes all the way to the end, and you shoot through the pipe.
So do you stand in a, a building and shoot through the tube, or is the end of the tube open, like you're just standing outside shooting into the tube?
End of the tube, I hear what they call it, it's some sort of lock type thing, they have polymers that accepts the bullets through.
Well, that's the, that's the end of the range, it tells about where you actually shoot.
You're inside a building.
You're inside a building, okay.
Did Tony have anything on that, written materials, or?
Tony went down, Tony wrote it.
Yeah.
He went down to a place in Jersey and took some pictures, and I think he's been sharing those with many engineers. And it's had a formated design.
But it's, it's not, it's very, very simple, it's not as complicated as we thought, or, it's, it's pretty standard.
It sounds pretty crude, yeah.
The building's, I think, twelve by fourteen, and then there's just tubes on the ground.
And there's three different, three different tubes? So, and they all go back to the same building, or they're three separate small buildings?
No.
Same building?
Is there any way you guys could, I mean, it just looked like it was a plan, it was really hard to read, is there any way you guys put together a narrative that's kind of explains what that is?
We can ask.
There has to be more than a paragraph, you know, I mean.
I think you, I think, didn't he put a, a cover letter in it?
Yeah, there's a cover letter on it, but it doesn't go on the.
Yeah, because when you look at the plan, if you don't know what's going on, you're kind of like, what is this, so if you have like a short narrative, I mean, now we just clear it up.
Well, the need, the need is for the public to be able to pick up that material, look at it and say, oh, okay, this is how they're going to do that, and provide safety.
That's the, what we need to have.
So can you guys submit that like early next week? Something you could do, or?
Yeah, we can have it by, we'll try to have it by Monday.
All right. Yeah, you don't want to be caught up against that, you know, you want to try to, I mean, that thing seems pretty simple with like just a narrative and a thing, you know.
At this point here, I mean, if we can get, if there's anything that we need, you know, we get it by Monday, that's really what we kind of have to have, or just to, you know, I don't want to do this thing where we're going to be submitting it a day ahead of time, people are kind of rightfully going, we didn't have time to look at it, really think about it. I'm going to be speaking to Mr. Brody about the Artisan Park, Pedro, I talked to you about that one day, what the process might be, or what the intent is, or whether it's going to be dedicated to the town, if we do that now, and when it'd be done. So I'll be talking to Vicki, and more so to have her start talking to you, and the two of you can start determining what's going to happen there. Where are we at with the fire company agreement?
I spoke to Matt last night, he was supposed to have a letter to you already.
So everything's in agreement?
Believe so, and that he seemed to have no issues.
All right, so we can get that like tomorrow or Monday?
You should, yeah, he was supposed to have it today, sorry. I spoke to him yesterday, about six o'clock. He wanted to talk to me about the hammerhead, that was all, and I talked, the hammerhead, the, we're using the hammerhead detail from the green connections. And it's not the standard building department, so, sorry, building code.
Now, Julie had asked, and I concur, request, the SWIP was submitted to Julie, and then several days later went to the town, were there any changes?
I have to get her a few text changes.
There are some changes that were made?
Minor.
Okay, nothing substantial.
But Julie knew, Julie knew that, because I did tell her that we had a few minor edits.
You know, I'm not talking about anything, I'm talking about here, going to the town hall, being in the town hall.
Yes.
The clerk's possession, so it can be read by people in the public.
Thank you, the school just got there yesterday.
I'm aware of that, yeah, yeah, yeah. Now, Mary Ann, the TND memo?
She issued it to us, and we reissued it, yeah. We got that today, and we reissued it.
Yes, I saw, I saw Mary Ann's, you know, she's standing with that, trying to make sure everybody's on the same page there. Same with the waivers, I've requested the way, the comprehensive waiver list?
That's in Peter's list, um, letter.
That's in Peter, and he's talking to you, I spoke with Peter, he said he was going to speak to you directly, because he said it wasn't a notice, but the draft isn't due on another letter, so.
Yeah, Mary, Mary Ann and Julie looked at the, at the list of waivers, and I think that they concur with Peter that the list that you guys had done was accurate, and the hearing notice was. Was accurate, so.
And that's what we got tonight, so that waiver.
Yeah, I guess, I didn't, I mean, I didn't have a chance, although I just got the packet tonight, so.
That was the waiver list.
Okay.
And that's the.
Yeah.
Edits of the TND.
I mean, this waiver list that you guys submitted tonight is no different, I assume, than the list that you previously submitted.
I, I didn't submit anything tonight.
No, what is this then?
We got something tonight.
No, that's not the waiver list.
Okay.
What is that?
That was just something I sent out last night in the midst of that Dr. Clemens conversation.
Oh, with the trees and all that?
Yeah.
Well, that was the next thing I had on my list, so the Dr. Clemens, it sounds like we're all set.
He seemed very happy at about midnight last night.
Well, he just wanted the numbers, he said, give me the numbers, what, how do they break down?
We settled it about midnight.
Yeah.
I had more hours after that.
And then the water report.
So we gave.
You have them.
You got, we got both tonight?
Yes.
And then, and then, as, as we said, the big ones, we have one for the town, one for the library, and one for Julie.
And this is the.
The water budget is a red line.
That's the water quality, and the smaller is water budget.
For the consumption of the charity?
Yes.
What kind of review do you need for that, Julie, I mean, how long do you think? Can you kind of do a quick look at it, just make sure there's nothing major that jumps out? Appreciate it. And. I think that's pretty much all I had.
Don't talk about the propane?
Oh, yeah, the propane, the tanks that were underground storage for the, for the homes. Speaking of Dave, it sounds like State, DEC doesn't regulate anything under eleven hundred, but the town has a, an air code under the aquifer protection.
Yeah, so we, we spoke, we spoke to, to.
John?
No, to, to, the town essentially protects under eleven hundred, so we have two choices, one, we make them all bigger than eleven hundred, and then it's not covered, or there is a definition of what fuel means. Because fuel means, so like what Peter was saying, he thinks it more relates to oil, not propane, but he says the other one, the other thing to do is to make him eleven fifty, and then.
Is there a definition of fuel in the town's code?
He couldn't find a definition, but.
You could not find a definition?
He couldn't, and when we called DEC to ask him this, they said they don't regulate propane.
Which is probably why they don't consider, DEC probably doesn't consider fuel.
Propane's better than oil.
Well, my guess. Well, my, my guess is that the town is probably trying to mitigate what DEC would not cover with the same intent, which is probably liquid fuels, and they just didn't know to pick up on the propane.
So, so on that issue, I mean, I get, the way that I look at it is, the town's code is pretty broad, it just says fuel, and propane is a fuel, so I think there's a couple of ways that you can handle it. You could do it your way, one way, or make them all over eleven hundred, which may not be, you know, may not work for you. Or you can get interpretation, either from John, or for the zoning board, basically indicating that this section doesn't cover propane, and it was meant to cover, you know, petroleum products. Or you could seek variance from the zoning board, I mean, those are some of the options to sort of address that issue, so it's taken care of. I mean, I don't want to run the risk that you put them all in, and then somebody says, well, they're fuel tanks and they're prohibited, you know, so.
Yeah, so right now, the, the safe way to do it is just make them bigger.
It's your choice, however you want to do it, I, there's three, three, two, three options, you know, it's up to you guys.
So I think, you know, as a safeguard, we'll say, we'll, we'll commit to make them bigger, but we'll talk to the, to the building department and.
Keep going another.
And double check with how we interpret it.
It's fine, because.
Any other board members have questions? Double check my list one more time.
And just so everyone knows, the plans that were submitted, the MDP plans, there were minor edits based on some of the consultant conversations, so the set that you have has the latest plans based on our July conversations, and whatever, did not change, so they are complete sets, as well as the site plans.
Can you clarify what you mean, by the ones that we have, this?
No.
That you're going to give us?
The electronic copy and the set.
Those, those were, were suggested, we provided electronic.
Yeah, got that, so we'll get them tonight or something like that?
Well, no, I don't think we're reissuing full sets, we were giving.
No, no, the, the electronic copy was already sent to Larissa. The, and then those are the full sets for the town and library.
The library delivered one, and sold in the next week.
You folks have anything else you want to present at this point, or? No?
I'm actually have a question.
Um, you want to say something? What, what do you have?
Before you, I know there are a bunch of changes that you're doing, and that's fine, and everything is for the better, I think. But they described to us the other night that they're going to have a parking space for viewing of, for ten cars, and some sort of a platform, as I understood it, where you could get on this platform and you could view both north and south. So that, and I'd like to see it done, not fifteen years from now, but during construction, where it would be something similar to a big building going up, and they have the little peep holes in the plywood that you look through. It would be somewhat similar.
On the view, you mean on the view, looking.
The Artisan Park area, yeah.
And it would satisfy an awful lot of people.
No, that's already been talked about, the intent is to try to have that done at the front end of the project.
Right, rather than, so they could watch the construction all along.
Yeah.
Yep, if there's no objection to that. Thank you.
Yeah, okay. All right, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for the record, my name is Elaine Labella, I'm the Director of Land Protection for the Hoosatonic Valley Association. And I just want to make you aware that, that we've had a terrible time trying to get access to documents in the planning board office. We understand the need to fill out Freedom of Information requests, I have no problem with that, but we are not able to view documents in a timely manner. And it's very difficult to know what documents have been submitted, so I'm not sure, I'm finding out about documents that are being reissued that I never knew were issued in the first place. I'm delighted to hear that the applicant has presented some information in electronic form. It would really make life a lot easier for me, and also for the staff of the planning board, if those electronic versions could be distributed to members of the public who would like to see them. I'd much rather look at something on the screen than in a seven thousand, a seven hundred-page document.
See, we want just the absolute, all the planning board members says, we don't want it on the screen, we want to get, we want the paper copies, because I don't want to flip back between fifty-five pictures on a computer screen, I'm not that good at it, so I need to.
Everything that's current, the SWP, everything? Okay, so. Wonderful. The master plan, the sets of maps, the consultants' comments.
Because we were told, we foiled.
All right, no, 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 it's, no, no. Alright, no, 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 we're not going to go, you're not going to start jumping into the conversation, she's at the podium, Elaine, go ahead and speak.
We wanted to make you aware that we were having some difficulties, and I'm looking forward to reading these documents, uh, either at the town hall or at the library, and anything that you can do to help us out, uh, getting access to the documents, we'll really appreciate it, and thank you very much.
Everything we talked about today will be there tomorrow, except for those couple of things we meant, just mentioned here at the end, or there might be a Monday date or whatever, or?
And the website takes time to upload them.
Sure, yeah.
It, it will take at least a month.
That will be fine.
My understanding is you guys are putting up your final documents that you have submitted to the town on your website. So if you want anything else from the town's consultants, or anything that's been, you know, done by the town, you need to send a foil request.
I've already done that, and I'm still waiting.
Well, you have to, you have to take that up. So.
Yes.
If you want, if you want to look at the full file, which it sounds like that's what you want to do, you should file a foil request, and come down and go through the file.
Right, and I think, I think part, part of the problem, Ben, you've, you know, I'll speak to Larissa on this, you folks have come in sometimes, and you want today, and she's not capable of getting it to you today, because she's got other work she's also got to do, and you hold off on submitting the foil request, so then it goes by three or four days, and then you finally submit, so yeah, it makes it look like it took you a long time to get it, but part of the responsibility there is yours.
I've either submitted my request by email, or by telephone, and I have not walked into, I have not walked into the building.
I'm not saying you, I'm saying as a group, the people that have come to us from your organization, it's been in a variety of manners, and the simple way would have been just submit a foil request upfront, and go the proper way.
I think I'll request everything then. Thank you very much.
No problem.
Tony, do you have anything, Tony?
Um, the consultant's comments, uh, which I guess are the town's purview, um, we got an answer from the town clerk that we could not look at those until September nineteenth.
That's not true.
And, and, well, that's what Dawn Marie sent to me.
I understand, I'll take care of that problem.
Thank you so much, I really appreciate it, because, because Mr. Everett said that we should be able to see them right away.
Tony, they may be able to help you out here.
Okay.
So, we are posting, as you requested, the response to the comments, the response to the comments actually state the comments that each consultant.
Right.
And that will be on the seeker, silo seeker site?
That's on the seeker site, yes.
Thank you, it's not there yet, thank you.
And, and just.
Now, it was just issued today.
Okay.
Oh, it was issued today, yeah, in Philly.
It will be, okay, thank you very much, that's very helpful, thank you.
Just for the record, I never said you could see the documents right away, I mean, foil requires a response within five days, and then, and a reasonable time for the town to provide the documents, so, the town is going to do its best to try to give them to you as quickly as possible, understanding the circumstances.
But thirty days is excessive.
I never said that you would get them right away.
What you did say was if it was easily available, and it was, you know, in a form that was not a problem for them, we could go right across the hall and look at it, that's what you said.
I never said that, but that's okay.
That's what they heard, and I have been writing.
You can put words in my mouth, it's up to you however you want to do it, but, we're going to follow the law with respect to foils.
It's no problem, now it's going to be posted on the, on the net, I'm very happy.
Oh, you're asking, you're asking the way to do it?
Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments, questions?
So, at the public hearing, will it be another presentation then, like what was done before, is that how?
Sure, we can, we can definitely do one, we've actually been doing presentations every Wednesday for the last, uh, two months, and it's been very helpful.
Oh, good.
A lot of different people from the community, and from, uh, surrounding communities have come, and, uh.
Where have you been holding those at?
Uh, we've been holding at the office, actually, since the office is, we're remodeling the office, we actually, uh, had it at, uh, Four Brothers yesterday.
Okay.
It's a little crowded, a little loud, but, uh, we've been getting groups, the idea was get groups between five to twen- maximum twenty people.
How many people show up?
Anywhere between five and twenty, and, uh, but on, on, as a smaller group, then a lot of people feel more comfortable speaking, asking questions, uh, you know, given their concerns, uh.
Sure.
So it's been, it's been very helpful.
Yeah, that's good, it's a great idea. What is, what do you feel is the public's feeling then, based on these meetings, do you get a, is it a positive?
Yeah, you know, even, you know, as, as you all know, even from the past, you know, it's, it's always been pretty positive, there's also people who have concerns, um, some, I think, they're happy that some, a lot of the concerns have been, um, even mitigated even further in the new plan, they're happy that we're sticking with our commitments that we did in the past, with regards to green infrastructure, and, and protecting the water bodies, and, you know, all those things, so I think that's, uh, that's been, that's been great, um, their, one of their concerns has been public access, but they understand that they want to make sure the project's viable, so, and, you know, the, the, their biggest thing, I think, is everybody wants jobs. Uh, you know, but as we all know, it's hard for young, young people nowadays to get jobs, and, uh, we already see it with seventy-five people already working on the site, uh, you know, people eat in the deli, people, you know, everywhere, it's just, you know, and, and it'll grow as we go, and, so I think, uh, the, you know, overall, I think we're getting great comments.
Good.
It's hard, hard, it's hard to know what to expect with the public hearing, I mean, um, I would expect with this project to get a lot of people to turn up for, on the other hand, I haven't been hearing a lot from that many people to make me think I'm going to get a big turnout, I just don't know, it's hard, it's hard to get a read on it, um, we're going to hold in the auditorium on the fourth, um, regular start time, and, uh, if we should get a large crowd, my thought is we probably should limit the, uh, the amount of time people are allowed to speak, three to five minutes, somewhere in that area, just so it's manageable, so nobody, you know, dominates the floor, and, um, also do some kind of control as far as, if people start repeating the same thing over and over, I don't know if you can put a hold on that or not, but, I mean, try to direct people a bit, I guess, if need be.
Yeah, if, if the board desires us to do a, by way of presentation, we were thinking, last time we got some comments that people couldn't see the screen, we do own a much larger screen that we can bring over as well.
Yeah, whatever you can do for a presentation, it will help, I would definitely go ahead and go forward with that part of it.
I think some of the things that you guys had discussed, um, previously was, and you can probably make a decision, um, about these at the public hearing, which is, do you want to, if you decide to close the hearing, um, if you think it's appropriate, do you want to extend the right for the public to write comments, write written comments, that's, that's one option. Um, the other one is, I think Pedro said he was going to get a stenographer to sort of record verbatim what is said.
You're still doing that?
Do you, do you want, um, responses to any questions that members of the public bring up? Do you want them to respond, you know, in writing, or respond at the hearing, um, you know, those are some of the things that you should think about.
Yeah, I mean, um, again, the format, I mean, whether, whether we accept questions or not, even as a board, you know, is that the way to go, or do we, uh, just accept the comments, and then we can respond in writing later?
Yeah.
Formal responses?
Assume.
Thank you.
Does anybody have any preference on how that goes?
What's the question, comments before?
How, how we proceed with the hearing, as far, or the public hearing, I mean, do we allow questions to be directed at the board, and try to answer them there, do we just take questions, and then we can meet thereafter some other time, and review them, provide responses to them as a board, um?
Or ask the applicant to respond?
Or ask the app, yep.
I guess we should be able to respond, um, you know, right there if, if possible, for the people with the question want to, want an answer, you know, and if we're capable of, or, you know, the applicant is capable of providing an answer, we should, whoever can answer it should be able to provide an answer.
The only, the only risk with that, and I have seen this before in other public hearings, is where if you have a question that's asked, and the board responds, and responds in a certain way, you may get, you may trigger other questions and other people in the audience, and then you end up with a debate, where people.
How about in writing, the applicant can?
Well, the interesting thing about that is, I mean, I see where you're going, Norm. That's the whole point, I mean, if somebody else has a question, and then the answer causes you to think of something, that's, that's how dialogue.
Oh, no, and they can ask the questions, the point I'm making is, do you want to hold the board responsible, sit there and go back and forth between each of those parties?
I see, the responsibility issue is a different question, but the dialogue issue, that's a positive.
I don't have a problem with that, no, and I expect that to happen anyways, yeah, I just, I'm not so sure that we want to be in a position where we're going to try to answer those questions that night, and a lot of the times in the, in previous public hearings, I can't answer off the top of my head, we'll have to get back to the details.
Sure, yeah.
So, it ends up being a written response anyways.
We do our best, you know, I guess, making the comments, and we, like I said, we can do right then and there, we'll, we'll, we'll give a response in writing, after we've discussed.
Or we just leave it across the board, all the responses, you know, everything will be responded to, and we have the body out and we can review it.
Okay.
How do you see handling this debate, and, you know, during the meetings, what's typical format?
I mean, it's done both ways, you know, it's just a question of, you know, magnitude and degree, if you get a lot of people showing up, um, it's, it's usually better to have the questions, and then the responses in writing, if you get four people showing up, and they got four questions, and you, you answer the questions, you know, so.
We can play it by ear and tihoc goes on, right?
I guess the main thing is that everybody be assured a chance to speak if they need to.
And have their questions answered.
And we can, and we can hold the public hearing open for a couple of days after, or what, it doesn't matter, I mean, whatever the timeframe might be, to allow for written comment.
Sure.
They're usually have most.
I got that, yeah, yeah.
How are you going to publish all this to the public hearing, I mean?
The typical manner.
Yes.
Sue, go ahead, what's your process?
And post it on the property.
Paste it.
Paste and posted?
Posted in paper, noted, certified itself, and then sign the, uh.
At the site.
So we would put a sign kind of where the existing construction sign is? Great.
Is that the radio?
No.
Be on your website?
Alright, that's, we're going to hold a regular public hearing here, it's, it's whatever the process has always been.
I think the legal requirement is notification by newspaper.
Yes, it is.
That's newspaper, surrounding property owners, and then posting a, a sign on the, on the property, and that's the three options, and that's what we're going to use all.
And I think it'll be televised, correct? Can we? Are you available on the fourth?
What is that?
September fourth.
It's Thursday.
Thursday?
Yeah, regular meeting night, yeah. There will, and, um, you need anything different for the setup in the auditorium, or?
Well, oh, wait, no, I'm sorry, you know, we can't broadcast live from down there.
You can't, yeah, yeah, it's always.
I'm sorry, I missed.
That was always delayed tape, that's right, yeah.
We can tape it, I mean, you know, if somebody wants to do some wiring down there in the building, I could go live.
I guess, yeah.
Well, well, we did, I mean, we, uh, we taped it the last time and aired it, so, but that's our only option, that's what it is.
Does that mean that people want to see what happens while it's happening, they have to come?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's just a technical thing, they don't have the system down here to do it, but I guess that's a good reason to have a written comment period after the hearing, so if anybody wants to look at. Sure.
Hearing after it's been posted several days after the meeting, they can do that.
How soon after the meeting could you post that recording?
Well, as far as the television is concerned, it's typically up within, depending on how late the meeting goes, uh, by late the next day.
Okay, it's good.
If you broadcast, and it's on YouTube usually within forty-eight hours, again, it'll depend on length, processing.
Alright.
The longer the meeting, the longer the process.
Okay. Alright, anybody have anything else? Julie, you've been off for five tonight, anything else?
No.
Good, good.
So if the board is so inclined to deem the application complete tonight, um, put together a resolution, so you can do that.
Too hard, right?
What a coincidence.
What a coincidence.
Yeah, start.
Now therefore be it resolved that the planning board determines the applications are complete for the purpose of public review and schedule a public hearing according to the town code, and referring to, referring the applications to the Dutchess County Planning Department for its recommendation of the New York State General Municipal Law. And be it further resolved that a public hearing will be held by the planning board on September fourth, twenty fourteen, at seven P M. at the town hall located at forty-nine eighty-eight, twenty-two A M. Be it further resolved that the clerk of the planning board shall publish and mail notice of public hearing in accordance with the town code, and be it further resolved that the applicant shall post notice of the public hearing on revised project site in accordance with section one twenty-one dash sixty-two of the town code. And be it further resolved, a copy of the application is on file in the A M E N town clerk's office for public viewing and inspection during normal business hours. The application can also be viewed and downloaded from the town's official website at www dot A M E N Y dot gov. Be it further resolved, at the public hearing noticed herein, the planning board will view all persons interested in the application. Persons, persons may appear at the hearing in person or by agent, and may also submit written comments to the planning board prior to or at such hearing. Be it further resolved that this resolution shall take effect immediately. Be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution shall be filed in the town clerk, town and A M E N clerk's office within five days after this document. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Just a second.
Roll, Chairman Fontaine?
Yes.
Peter Clair?
Yes.
Nathan Roy?
Yes.
Anthony Robeskelly?
Yes.
Eric McEnroe?
Yes.
Bill Kroger?
Yes.
Anybody have anything else, Dave, how about your stall? Good to go.
Make that motion.
All seconds.
All favor.
Aye.